Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 28th, 2025 meeting of the Fond du Lac City Council. The first item of business's roll call, which is done electronically, and I will declare a quorum, present as we are all here. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, which is followed by a moment of silent reflection. Please rise. Next on our agenda, we have a special presentation. The Fond du Lac Fire Rescue will present a check to the American Red Cross.
So on May 2nd this last, this year, we had our annual Brat Fry for the Red Cross. We were able to donate to them $9,100. I just want to say thank you, everybody, for your support. Thanks for showing up. You know, everybody at Manager Moore for helping us, you know, supporting us, the city council members in the city. The Red Cross does a great job to the residents that live in Fond du Lac. Every time we have a fire, they show up to help people who are displaced out of their homes and give them, you know, a place to stay during the time when they're trying to figure stuff out. So I just wanted to say thank you, and it was an honor to be able to be a part of raising money for them.
I want to say a special thank you to Noah for arranging this again this year, and thank you to all of you, as he stated, for your support. We were just talking in the back of the room that some of the records we're able to find go back 10 years to 2015, although we think it's been going longer than that. And it's been over forty, almost $45,000 that has been raised through this Brat Fry, which is just an incredible contribution to help us save lives and to be able to work and partner with the fire departments to help the victims. And we're just incredibly grateful for this continued partnership. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you so very much. Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we have none, so we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda finalizes the proposed actions for the meeting, A, May 14th, 2025 minutes, and B, list of claims dated May 21st, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Godfrey and second by Mr. Heisler. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is audience comments, agenda and non-agenda items. The presiding officer will limit speaking time for non-agenda items to one minute and items noticed on the agenda to five minutes. Ms. Hefter, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
We do not.
We do not, so that concludes our audience comments. Next, we'll move on to our action items. Action item A is Class A intoxicating liquor and Class A fermented malt license, limited liability company, SSV LLC, agent name, Chitania Reddy Ghathala, doing business as Eastside Spirits. Business address is 405 Fond du Lac Avenue, and our introduction is by our city clerk, Ms. Hefter.
Thank you, President Brolle. SSV LLC is applying for a Class A liquor and Class A beer license for Eastside Spirits at 405 Fond du Lac Avenue for off-premises consumption. Background checks were done on the officers and the proposed agent, and city staff and alcohol license committee recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Hefter? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Mullin and second by Mr. Godfrey. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously. That ends our action items, so we will move on to our presentation of input items. First, we have an update on park bridge, playground, and resurfacing projects presented by our Public Works Director, Mr. De Vries.
Thank you, President Brolle, and thanks for the opportunity to just give a brief update on some of the park projects. At advisory park board meetings, we, we present an update. Usually John does that, and we thought it'd be a good idea to give the whole council and some others who are watching, you know, a similar update. So the first update would be on the bridge. So we've been talking about this Proman Bridge for a number of years now. Being one of those DOT projects, it takes five years or so to actually get to construction. That project, we have a contractor, and they will be starting the week after Walleye Weekend. So on the 16th of June, the road will be shut down, bridge will start to be removed. We're also taking the opportunity to do some dredging in the area while with the bridges out, so that'll help with the boating access through there as well. The other thing to note, the pedestrian bridge that was recently installed from oven to Fountain Island is complete and open, so that will be open for Walleye Weekend as well. There's still some grass growing in there, so hopefully we can keep some folks off that and not muddy it up too much, but that's ready to go, and that'll be an access. The project for the, the main bridge will be scheduled to be done at the end of October, so it'll be a few months before we're able to see the new bridge, and we're excited for that. During that same time, the pavilion parking lot will be repaved. There'll be some new curb and gutter, some additional stalls, and we're adjusting the access point further away from the bridge, so it'll be the same in and out. So we're able to gain some additional stalls there, but towards the end of July and into August, we'll be reconstructing that parking lot as well. We thought it best to get it done while there's all kinds of activity in the area with the bridge. Let's see here, playgrounds. So one thing that we wanted to highlight is a ribbon cutting. We completed a couple of playgrounds last year, and still we're doing some landscaping and finishing it up. So Tuesday, June 17th at 10:00 a.m., we're going to have a ribbon cutting for playgrounds at Buttermilk Creek Park and then also at Russell Park. So we'll start at Buttermilk Creek, and then we'll move over to Russell. So that, that'll be a, a good day, and we always have a good turnout, and people like to see the new, new things that our partner Burke likes to come up with. So that's an invitation for you. You'll see that coming out and other media and other invitations, but just heads up on that. The main playground we're replacing this year is in Lakeside Park, so just east of Splash Pad, between Splash Pad and Main Street, there's two pretty old and outdated playgrounds, and so we're working with Burke again to replace those two with one kind of larger one. We haven't seen the, the designs yet or the final designs, but we're working with them, and hopefully we will have those done sometime yet this year, maybe in the summer, but it could stretch into fall. So that'll be exciting to see that done. And then just another note on playgrounds themselves, the leadership Fond du Lac group that Envision puts on worked with the Children's Museum to install some signs. So when people visit the Children's Museum, if you're not familiar with the city or even Lakeside Park, you may not even know there's a park, you know, not that, that far away. So this group decided they would work with the museum and install some signs that would basically direct people to the playgrounds in Lakeside Park. They call it Path to Play. So that was kind of a neat project they did, and they just wrapped it up, I believe, two weeks ago. So that, that'll be in addition. You'll see some new signs there, and that's where that's from and what it's for, and hopefully they'll be able to generate some activity back and forth between the museum and the park. Onto resurfacing projects. So we have a couple basketball courts being done this year, Taylor Park and McKinley Park. Those are out for bids, and we'll be working on that in the summer. And then Buttermilk Creek Tennis Courts will also be resurfaced this year. That project was bid out, and the contractor's ready on board with that. Don't have an exact schedule, but that, that'll be over the summer as well. And then in Taylor Park, the trail there is, is being resurfaced as well. There's nothing changing with it, it's just been in the same spot, but it's, it's in rough shape and needs some, need some new pavement, so that's what we're doing there. And then one other project that was on schedule for this year that we completed already was the Dizibo by Camelot Pond. That has been blasted and repainted, and we have some landscaping stuff around there, and, and that's looking pretty good. So if you get out that way, go check it out. It's, it was, it needed a much repair, and, and it looks great now. With that, I guess I would be able to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Thank you. Are there any questions or discussion from council? Mr. Mullin.
Thank you. I really don't have any questions on this. I mean, you guys are doing a great job in the parks as usual. I just wanted to give a shout out to Burke and, and how lucky we are to have them in Fond du Lac, you know, because we, we kind of get the state-of-the-art stuff first, and it's just, it's just a wonderful corporate citizen to have in our, in our city. That's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schussler.
Thank you. The second area you were talking about, you said on Main Street? I'm not picturing that. Where, where is that setting?
So it's on the, kind of the north end of the playground, so between Main Street and the Splash Pad and the shelter over there.
Oh, okay, in the park.
In the park. So it's kind of tucked in. You know, there's other amenities in the park, so if you're not specifically looking for the playground, you might not necessarily see it. But there's two older ones there that, that'll be replaced there. Once a new one goes in, then I'm sure you'll be able to see it, because it'll, it'll stand out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Well, I'm not seeing any, so I'll just add some things, and if anybody else has questions or comments. So I think it was last week, I had the opportunity to go speak to Ms. Krug's class, at second grade class at Chegwin, and parks was like the big thing that the kids wanted to talk about, because we talked about, you know, what does the city council do, and what does the city do, and, you know, talking about using your voices, because we've had some children here from Boy Scout troops and Girl Scout troops, so talking about like letting us know what are the things you like, and all the kids wanted to talk about the parks and how much they love the parks. They would love to see more parks. And one of the interesting things that they really cared about was more equipment for our littlest kids, like babies and toddlers, so I don't know if that's something we could work on with Burke to talk about as, as we talk about inclusivity, because I know Burke is really great at coming up with really cool, cool ways and ideas for kids to have better access to play. These second graders were really concerned about can babies play on the equipment safely? And so I just thought I'd throw that out there as something to consider. I also, I want to give a public shout out to Park Watch, because I know they were really instrumental in getting that playground at Russell Park. And I've talked about this a few times, but I remember being a kid and having to go to my brother's T-ball games at Russell Park and being bored out of my mind because there was nothing to play on as the sibling who had to just sit there and watch the T-ball and didn't really care about T-ball. So I am so excited that there's a playground there now there for families that are there when there's baseball games or T-ball or whatever going on in that park, and I love that the playground is baseball themed. So if you haven't seen it yet, at the ribbon cutting, check out, like, there's just so many cool little elements in that structure that I just love. And I just, I, I think I already said this, but I just wanted to echo Mr. Mullin's points that like it's just amazing that we have this partnership with Burke, that we can work on these playground structures, and, and just how much they do to try to make sure that all of our kids have the opportunity to play on our playgrounds. So I don't see anybody else who's requesting to speak, so thank you so much for that update, Mr. De Vries, and we're looking forward to seeing those improvements. All right, and the next on our agenda is Item B, an update on spring and summer events presented by City Manager, Mr. Moore.
Thanks. Kind of the same theme as Paul De Vries. These are things that we talk about a lot and thought it would be good to consolidate a number of events that are in the pipeline and put them on your radar. I know most of them probably already are, but there are so many things going on, sometimes things get lost in the, in the wash, so to speak. And the other thing a lot of people don't realize is just how many people from the city are involved in supporting these things, fire, police, public works, et cetera, et cetera, a lot of behind the scenes. So I will say this, something to think about related to what Paul was saying for, for you is when, when we close that bridge by the pavilion, just imagine how many hundreds of people are going to have their routines fouled up, because bicycling, walking, and driving, you know, there's lots and lots of that. And, you know, we'll give, we'll give you a heads up and everybody else, but still, there'll be some lessons learned those first few days as people are, are driving that direction, hoping to go by the lake and finding that bridge gone. I mean, it's kind of hard to imagine, isn't it? I mean, it's been forever since you couldn't drive all the way around the loop there by the lake. So with that, just a few things I thought I would mention. Last night, the Dog Spiders had their home opening game. I don't know if you know, but they play now 36 home games a year, and so, you know, last night will start a season that goes through August, and today was supposed to be Kids' Day, but, you know, the rain got in the way of that. But in any event, that's, that seems to be something that has been a lot of fun for people. Tomorrow night is the first of what I think's going to be either be 13 or 14 Thelma concerts over on Sheboygan. They're free, but it is music that is going to be a theme and a couple of other things I mentioned. This Sunday, we have Art on the Island, and I checked the weather forecast just before coming down, looks great. You know, if the weather's great, then it's a fantastic event, and I would imagine that we'll see a lot of people out. It's kind of like the Memorial Day Parade. You got a beautiful day, you just got hundreds of people that want to come out. Believe it or not, a week from Friday, we start Walleye Weekend. You know, for John Redmond, that probably started like three weeks ago, but it, it starts a week from Friday and then runs Saturday and Sunday, and the, the team at Fond du Lac Festival's done a great job, I think, getting ready for it. And the weather, you know, longer term forecast for that looks pretty good, too. There's a number of things going on that weekend as well, so I said Walleye Weekend starts a week from Friday. A week from Saturday, Taylor Park Pool opens for the season, and we feel pretty good about that. Our partnership with the rec department's really strong, and I, I've been by both of the pools. Paul and I were talking about that before the meeting. They look great, and the renovations and repairs we did to the whole slide tower and the, the slides themselves at the Fairgrounds Pool after last season came out great. I mean, those look like new, so both pools look great. But a week from Saturday, Taylor Park Pool opens, and then two days later on Monday, so this is the day after Walleye Weekend, the Fairgrounds Pool opens, and then they'll, they'll run through the summer until mid-August. The Monday after Walleye Weekend, we have Music Under the Stars starting, and so what happens with that start is next week, that week, there'll be Music Under the Stars on Monday, the Buttermilk Festival on Wednesday, and the Thelma Concert on Thursday, and that repeats for like the next 13 weeks, and so you've got three concerts per week for, for the duration of the summer, which is, which is pretty neat. And it's also been neat to see the, the attendance at Buttermilk Creek Park for both of those events. It's been very impressive how they've grown that over the years, so I wanted to just mention that. Something that is newish, because last year was the first time, the, there's a group of people who wanted to get together and have a fundraiser, but also to highlight some groups that they have termed heroes, Fire Rescue, Police, the Sheriff's Department, and some others. And, and I've mentioned it to you now, because last year, Chief Garrettson received a check for $8,000 as a result of that, and Chief Goldstein did, too. Being that that was the first year, that I would expect that to be a much even bigger turnout this year, but that's Friday, June 13th, and so that's the Friday after Walleye Weekend. Saturday, June 14th is the first of two Saturday night concerts that the Thelma has scheduled. And I'm sure Mr. Heisler knows a lot more details about this, but, because I've seen it on the marquee at the radio station, but you've got the lead from Chicago and the lead from Boston. So the real ones are, are coming to Fond du Lac to play the concert on Saturday, June 14th, which I think will be a, a huge turnout. And then later in June, the, the night markets return, and thanks to the planning Paul and his people have done along with the DFP, the night market's going to be where you always have, have seen it before, there at Sheboygan and, and Main, and that's, that's nice. They've really grown that, so that'll be every other week from late Thursday, pardon me, June 26th, a Thursday night in June. And then shortly after that, I don't know if you've seen this event or not, but it's the, what they call the Father's Day Car Show. It's at the Fairgrounds. It's huge, and you don't even have to have a fancy car to go. It's just amazing what, what they, what they do with that event, so that's a lot of fun. And last thing I'll mention in terms of June events will be Breakfast on the Farm. You'll probably see some advertisements for that. It's an annual event, and last year, there were hundreds of people who came out for that. But farmers all trade off year in and year out, and, you know, they, they will host one, and then it takes about 10 years to recover, and, you know, they'll pass it on to, to one of their farm friends. And then fireworks this year will be on, on the 4th of July, that Friday, and I would mention to you along with that, because a lot of people don't know this, but Festival Foods underwrites that whole show. And at Arbor Day, I was asking the festival rep, you know, what, what that outlay is these days, because fireworks have gotten really expensive, so we're talking like 25 to 30K for that fireworks show that Festival underwrites, which is, which is pretty neat. And then I will end by saying, and I could go through July, but I won't, August, I won't do that either, so I would, I would just offer this to anyone who asks you, where do you find out about these things? I have to say that Destination Lake Winnebago's calendar's gotten pretty robust, because they've given a lot of people access to it, to directly enter things, and that's, I think, been a huge improvement for that calendar, and it's easily searchable on Google or anything else. And then lastly, this, this guide that the rec department puts out, I think, and I've, I've told some people over at the rec department, I, I think this one's, this one is the best one they've ever done, and it's just jam-packed with summer activities for kids of all ages, sports, trips to Six Flags, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot in there, and if anyone asks you, you know, hey, what, what can my kid do, refer them to that rec guide. Even though everybody got one in the mail, it's also in a PDF format on the rec department's web, website, so, you know, it's there for people to check into, but it's really great. They have so many things going on this summer, it's impressive. So that's kind of the, the pitch for what all the nonprofits are doing and, and what our team's doing to support them and to make this a, a great community and a fun summer. So I'd take any questions anybody has, because I didn't hit on everything, no offense to those I, I left out, but I just wanted to, you know, have a conversation starter.
All right, thank you, and we will start with Mr. Godfrey.
Thank you for all that wonderful information, but I just wanted to, I don't have a question or just a comment. Also in June, on June 14th.
You're good.
Yeah, I wanted to add also, June 14th is also Ebony Vision's annual Juneteenth event at Buttermilk Creek Park from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., so that's all I wanted to add.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's a federal holiday.
Yes, it is.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from council? Otherwise, I, I also have a couple of events I'll share, because there's one tomorrow that I think will be of interest, especially to city council, if I can find my email. The library is hosting at 6 o'clock the reveal of our local history book, and that was something that we use some of our ARPA dollars for, to hire a writer to update a book that has been used since the 90s, I believe.
Right.
In elementary classrooms to learn about Fond du Lac and the area. So if you're available at 6 o'clock at the library, this is a great opportunity to, to get a copy of the book and to learn more. And then, of course, we also have our summer reading program at the library, which I believe sign up starts on Saturday, the 31st, and that's not just for kids, even though the kids get the most excited, I think, but adults can read as well and earn, is it still Chapter 52?
Popcorn in Chapter 52 and grand prizes, too.
So we, the library partners with Ferris Popcorn, you can get free popcorn, and then Chapter 52 gift certificates, so you can go buy some more books to do some more reading. So, and then the library also has a shiny new website where we have a great new calendar where people can find all the other events going on at the library this summer, because I can't remember what they all are, but there's just a lot of, always, unless, I don't know, John Mark, did you want to highlight anything specific at the library this summer?
No, just our summer reading happening. We're really excited about that, and that kicks off, we're going to kick off at the farmer's market with our new book bike that was our, that we revealed yesterday at the, at the library, and so we'll, we'll be there at the farmer's market kicking off summer reading.
So there's always something awesome going on at the library over the summer. And do we still have a partnership with books, buses to books?
Yes, we do.
Yes, so we partner with Fond du Lac Transit so that, what day of the week is that?
I think it's Thursday.
Thursdays. With a library card, children can get a free ride on a city bus to get to the library. So, sorry I kept putting you on the spot, but I don't have all this memorized, but since Mr. Moore gave us the opportunity, I really want to highlight the awesome stuff that our library and our transit system and, and some of the other things that, that didn't get mentioned, because there's just, there's so much going on, and it's pretty cool.
There is, and on that note about the new book, there's a great article in the newspaper by one of the authors. Did you see that? I, I was, I was really taken with that article. She reveals in that article, you know, what, what a joy it was to write that and go, go through the research and do the updates. So if you have a chance to look at that, that, that'd be great. But yeah, that was a great use of ARPA money. Who knew? But that's, we'll, we'll have something there, and I think there's a pretty wide distribution list. I think they'll, yeah, I think you'll, you'll all get a copy of it, too, as will many, many people.
All right, Mr. Heisler.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Moore. This is a, this is a great discussion to have, and I'm glad that we're bringing some awareness to maybe some folks who don't have it. I guess my, my only question is, you had mentioned Music Under the Stars and done a great job with that, and there's a Facebook page and all that sort of stuff. Some of the Buttermilk Festivals, because they're all individual, would you say best, best practice would be to check out the FDL.com calendar for, for most of those? Are most of those user submissions on that calendar, then, for those?
They are, and, and the, the organizers for the, the shows at Buttermilk Creek have, have done a good job to, to, you know, to populate those things on the, on the calendar. And I checked their website, they've got some of it on their website, but not all.
Okay.
Music Under the Stars is fully populated. You can read all about the, the artists that'll be performing this year, but some of the other shows aren't, aren't up yet for the Wednesday nights.
Got it, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. And with that, I am not seeing any other questions or comments. Oh, but Mr. Moore?
To mention to, to you that you may get questions about the farmer's market and whether or not it will endure through the summer because Main Street's a rec. It will. It will pivot at some point this summer when the construction is done north of where it has been. The farmer's market will move out of the way so we can do Main Street south of that. It'll just be a different location, but no change in vendors or anything like that.
Great, thank you. And, and just thank you for highlighting, again, all of the, well, not even all, many of the things that are happening just in the first part of the things that are happening just in the first part of summer, so.
When I, when I started to think about talking about the, just the library, I was like, let John Mark have that.
All right, with that, that ends our input items and so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, motion by Mr. Zimmerman, second by Mr. Heisler. Sorry, Ms. Leering. That is not debatable, please proceed to vote. And that passes unanimously, we are adjourned.